The next item is going to be public comment for visitors. Donna, did you want to go before that?
No.
Okay. You can go first.
Thank you. Where should I go?
You can use the microphone right there. Actually, if you can pull a chair up if you want. Thank you.
All right, so I'm Maddox Wright out. I built the Gaga pit in Marge Goodfellow Park. And although it's built, it still has a bit of money that needs a lot to be fundraised. And I was hoping that Borough and/or the Recreation Council could provide a contribution. As of now, $3,898 have been raised out of about $6,000. So yeah.
Okay. What? I'm not sure what your requirements are for your Eagle Scout project. Where was? The money can be raised after it's built or?
Money can be raised after, just the Gaga pit needs to be paid off. And as of now, my family's paying for it, but they need to. And there's been multiple efforts to fundraise, and this is not the first place I've gone to. I've gone to businesses, the majority of which I've said that they can't contribute due to COVID. I had an article that was published on the S.H.S. Courier. And a few other things, including Spirit Night at Papa John's.
Okay.
What was it? That was gonna be the questions that I had was about the fundraising. I know the Borough Council put that on Facebook. Has there been additional funds raised through their recent posts? Through the GoFundMe?
Recently, I believe it was yesterday, the Cub Scout PAC 24 donated $250.
Okay, that's the local?
Yes.
Is the New Freedom group?
Yes, there's been another few donations that, you know, the names I haven't recognized, but besides that, it wasn't that much.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion for donation of $500 from the Borough towards the project for the Gaga pit.
Any discussion?
If there's any questions, please feel free to ask.
I'm gonna need a second.
See, you do a second.
I don't, I need a second, I definitely don't.
All right, I'll see.
All right, Dennis seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. What was it? All right.
Opposed? You have to vote. You can't, you can't just say. You have to be, you have to be one way or the other. Okay, I'll take a head count. I, Dennis and Ryan are yes, or no? Brunel's a no.
Yeah, Dave went for no.
Dave said yes.
Dave said yes.
Yes.
I heard an and.
Yes.
Yes. And my vote is aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, there can be donated through the GoFundMe website? Or is there some other way you'd like for me to see what?
I think we'll probably just cut you a chunk.
All right, should I just dig around or will that be mailed?
Well, it'll have to be mailed because it has to go through the Borough Office, but we'll make sure you get it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your workmanship too. The Gaga pit looks great. I think, I've seen kids already enjoying it, so.
It's been a lot of kids. It's a nice, it's a nice kid.
It's a nice addition.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's my preaching.
I know other people want to say things, so I'm waiting. Yeah, he's, yeah. Yeah, it was more expensive, I think, than what they anticipated. Shipping, shipping.
Hi, I'm Myra. I think we talked when I was here like a month ago. And my is, my concern actually is the putting together the New Freedom first, New Freedom Parade. And as we discussed earlier, and I've been in touch with the Lions, it's not gonna coincide with what they want to do that day. So, I thought maybe we push it ahead. At first, it was like the next day, thinking, hmm, you're not gonna ask people to come right back out the next day.
Sure.
So, to push it further ahead to try to do it the next week, which is the following Saturday. And still getting calls from people about this parade. Is it gonna happen? Can we get in? That kind of thing, even as of today. So I said, well, we'll wait until we come to the meeting tonight, and then we'll get some final answers as to where we can go with this thing.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you have a time? Your flyer didn't say?
Line up at four, step off at five.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're gonna be doing this in the dark? Well, it's daylight savings time.
Daylight savings time.
It gets dark at 5:00.
Well, you want, you don't want it to be happening in the daytime because it is a Christmas parade. And you wanna see lighting and that kind of thing. Considering the week before, it's not even starting and Santa's not coming in till 6:30. So it's really gonna be dark that week. So I'm pushing it up an hour and a half. The following week. So we figure it'd only take just an hour.
Yeah.
You know, for people to get down and to the green and that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I think that's, I think starting at four is probably gathering people together. They'll meet at the community center?
Yes.
Hey, what's the parade route?
Just from the community center down to the green.
So it'll be on Main Street, Pendott Street.
Does the fire, do they get a, does the Lions Club get a permit?
Do we get a permit for the first Thursday July parade?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
I've spoken with.
I'm gonna say no.
I've spoken with chief board and deputy. And they both say, just leave it up to them. They'll contact the fire police and have that handled on their end.
Yeah.
And they even said that they'll use their same Santa for the, to bring it on the ladder at the end, so.
The reason, the reason I asked you back tonight is because we had approved the joint with the Lions Club. That's kind of what you'd asked for last time. We all jumped up and down and said, that's a great idea. I still think it's a great idea. I, I, I just, I think council needs to approve it because we're, basically, we're closing the street for 45 minutes or an hour. Yeah, so. Under Robert's rules, I'm allowed to make a motion. So I'll make a motion. We allow the parade on December 6th?
Fourth.
Oh, I thought it was the 6th.
Fourth.
Really?
It's a Saturday right before Christmas.
Okay. December 4th and starting at four and ending no later than six?
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
No, first.
Okay, and you're gonna coordinate with fire police and everything should be okay there?
I thought if you're gonna, you're gonna reroute traffic, right?
Yeah.
So you don't?
How?
Why?
How are you gonna rewrite?
Well, I don't know, that's a, you know, if you have that permit, you're gonna close the street or something. They always want a traffic control plan. Where the traffic's supposed to go when you get to be close with its utility work, you know, whatever.
They'll have to go up Singer, down High, to Main, and go back up Franklin.
Essentially the same route this, we use on the 4th of July.
Right. It's actually the same, same route that Santa Claus uses for the Lions Club. And I think as long as the same fire police are doing it, I think we're okay.
No, I guess I hope so. I don't know, I wasn't here for the full supply.
You want, you wanna check it just to be sure? But I don't, I don't see where.
Really, it's up to, as long as the fire company's heart is sort of comfortable with.
Yeah.
Are you taking traffic?
And you said they are, so.
I've spoken with both of them.
Okay. Do you need to double check with the fire police to make sure that they're gonna have that? I, I, I think that they're, that she's gonna take care of that. So contingent on having the fire police take care of traffic for that hour?
Yeah, somebody's got to provide some kind of traffic control direction wherever some kind of traffic goes or it goes.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it would wander around through the neighborhood and stuff like that.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Post? My vote is aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just don't want coal to rain, that's all.
You sorry?
I don't want coal in my stockings.
That'd be sprayed.
Okay. Any other comments?
I don't know if someone else has anything that they're supposed to be here for, but I and I really don't want to go all the way up there, okay, so I can.
Oh.
I have a big enough voice.
Okay.
I live on the corner of Constitution and Franklin Street. For the last three.
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Maureen Scully. Mrs. Peter Scully. Been there since 1978. For the last two and a half, maybe three years, all we've gotten was pounding, pounding, pounding of street work. Because I'm on a corner. I'm on the main, one of the main corners. On June, I substitute teaching in Waterford County. I come home from school and I see water trickling down the edge of my sidewalk. They've got, I've taken pictures of it, down the sidewalk. Now, it's, the part of, the piece where it was, the water was trickling was one of those pieces that was dug up by one of those three companies that had done all that work. I can't even tell you whether it was Kinsley or which one it is. It's, I have a fire hydrant, and right next to the hydrant is the piece of concrete where the water was trickling down. It was just trickling when I got home. I decided I better go to the Borough and say something to them. I went to the Borough, a couple of people came out. They said, it's on my property, my side of the property. I've gotta take care of it as soon as possible. So, like a good citizen I am, without really thinking twice about it, I went to Open Shaw. Had to pay $90 down, $1,000 the next week, $700 when they finished. And to be honest with you, when they dug it up, that dirt, well, my, from the pavement to my house was not even wet. And it was rushing down the street for two days because they had to get the right, they had to get all the companies to put their flags out to, you know. But there, I can't tell you how much, you can talk to probably the police that live across the street from me, McGrath's, how much pounding our streets took during all of this work that was done. The pipe underneath must have cracked somewhere. If I was smart, back then, I wasn't smart enough to ask Open Shaw to give me that piece of pipe. They had to drill, they had to drill through my porch, which we bricked it in years ago, into my wall to pull the pipe out from the inside because they couldn't get it out from the outside. And all the, they've got the pictures of everything. Now, first of all, what would have happened if I decided not to do anything? It was the Borough water. My water was still running in my house. It wasn't my water that I was losing. If I had let it run, and by the end, by the next day or two days later, people were telling me, they were wondering what all this water was running down the street. I took it upon myself to do what was right and get somebody to come out and do it. But I get charged almost $1,800 for it. I feel, and then they had to dig off that piece of concrete where the water pipe is, or whatever that thing is, next to the hydrant to even get to it. That was just finished being done by whatever company was there. So if you ask me whether it broke on my side of the property because of our usage, I say no. It happened because of all that pounding that took place right there in front of my house for two and a half years. Before the, and they had just paved it and finished it when all of a sudden that water leak happened. So that's why I'm here, because I feel I should have had to pay almost $1,800 for it, the more I thought about it. And that somebody else was responsible for it. And with the Borough telling me to get it done as soon as possible, and I went and did that because I felt that way. I'm 72. I've gone back to substitute teaching to make up that loss of money. I don't know if you know what teaching is like today during this COVID, and this is Bottomer County. With, and on the younger kids, where they run out of the room and it's okay because you can't touch kids today. Where I have to carry a kid into the classroom because she refuses to come back in. I'm doing this because I need to make up that money. I don't feel it was my responsibility to have paid that kind of money for something that was done on work, underneath work, that had been done for, just finished by either Kinsley, you can ask Brunel, because he's a neighbor, how much pounding our areas took. In fact, and I was telling Donna, I could probably have somebody come into my basement and see how much stuff has come down off my walls from all that pounding and shaking of the houses in our corner. My house is right on the corner. Overall, it's built in 1901. My husband and I have done everything we could for the last 40 years to make that house one of the houses that still looks nice in New Freedom, to be honest with you. If you're not familiar with my house, it's got the wraparound porch and gazebo and the fenced in area and the trees. And I lost all my ground cover that had been there for years because it had to be dug up. That whole area, it's in the pictures that they have. And that's why I'm here. I feel that I should not have had to pay for that. And I paid it right away out of money that was my stimulus money and all. Just to get it done because I didn't want the Borough to have lost their water. And I wonder what it would cost if I didn't even notify anybody and let that water just run, run, run. But I took care of it immediately. And that's why I'm here.
Danny, this is a water service, right? What kind of, what materials are services, plastic or?
They use it, they had the plastic service. Not the, it was, it wasn't your 160 PSI we're getting down, but it's an older plastic service.
But isn't it coincidental that I never had a problem of leakage of water in 40 years until they did all that digging and all that work on my, on my sidewalk and right next to the hydrant and in the street?
How deep down was the line, Donna?
They had to go four foot deep into my yard. It's in the pictures. They had to dig four foot deep to get to that pipe.
Yeah, see, that's why it's at four foot, because at four foot, you're not really gonna get. I mean, it.
But that ground was, but my ground was not even wet.
Well, that doesn't really matter. Water's gonna follow the path of least resistance. The path of least resistance in this case was recently excavated ground. It's not gonna go back.
So you're gonna tell me that all that pounding couldn't have broken that pipe or split that pipe?
Wait a second, when did I just say that?
I'm just asking you, because I've, I've been sitting here all this time to get, to get this over with. I have to work tomorrow. I don't want to be sitting here for another two hours repeating myself.
So you said you were substitute teaching, and this occurred on June 21st? So you were still in school at that time, so you're still substitute teaching? And then you, now you said you had to go back?
No, that was my last day of school.
Okay.
And I would not have been working anymore. And I've gone back.
Okay. So, there are other types of that well line, pipe, in services along Franklin Street, correct, Danny? And those are all okay at this point?
So far, yes.
From, from the excavation and everything that was done along that area?
Right, at the time that those were all put in, there was no leaks as they respected and backfilling.
But nobody else has the pounding and the amount of digging we dug. They dug it these five times on my corner to do one line, this line, the one in front of my house, the one to connect it to the one across the street coming around the bend. Three years, two and a half to three years of this, of digging. I've got other pictures if you need to see all the machinery that was there. If you were in my house and felt that pounding of those machines that they had to do to, even when they put down the blacktop, the pounding was unbelievable. My neighbors had things fall off their walls.
Danny, did you see, did you actually see the break where the break was or how?
Nobody else came back.
Jake, Jake was out there.
Yeah, he didn't come back.
He went out there to turn the service off.
That's all they did.
And once he turned the service off, that put the sound of the water leaking. So that meant that it was on the customer's side.
Right, right, I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to find out or trying to ask or find out what the nature of the break was. I mean, how did it break? Did it separate? Did it come apart? Did it actually shear? Did it break?
Nobody came back.
It's pretty unusual for pla, for the flexible plastic to break. I mean, if you had an old
I mean, we had a.
galvanized or even a copper.
They did repair or did solve what was going on.
Well, I talked to Open Shaw and they even, they even felt. You probably aren't gonna get them to say anything because I didn't ask them to come here. But they, they didn't feel really good about it either. And the, the water, even if you're saying that the least resistance, wherever the water's gonna run, the problem was, this all happened immediately after all that work was done.
Did, did Open Shaw say how far behind?
Nobody said anything to me afterwards. They just killed me. I'm sorry, nobody. They never came back? Open Shaw never said anything?
I'd like to finish a question.
Well, go ahead.
How, do you know how far behind the sidewalk the break was? Did Open Shaw identify where it was broken, how far back it was broken?
I just have to say. If I had been smarter at the moment, I would have asked them to show me that pipe. They put a whole new pipe in.
The pipe was broken on, on the customer's side of the box. So, I mean, that's.
Right, I, I don't.
No, 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 everything's, from the street, everything is considered my side of the property. So that big piece of pavement that was there, they couldn't even get it out that way. They had to do, they had to get it from inside my house.
I, we're, we're just, I, I know what, what you're trying to say, but we're trying to establish what happened. And what happens is, if this is the hookup box, this belongs to New Freedom Borough. Out from here at the box to your house, that's your line. It's just, it's the same for all of us. Anytime that line would break, we would have to pay to have it replaced. That's why people try to sell insurance policies for water lines and gas lines and whatever. I understand what you're saying, but just.
But also what I'm saying is from the street to my house is considered, even the sidewalk is considered my side of the property. I mean, that's.
I'm just talking specifically about the water line itself. From that box into your house, that is your, your water line.
Well, maybe I'm not seeing where the box is, which is maybe the box.
Well, when he, when he shut the water off, he dropped a key down there and turned it off in that box.
Underneath that pavement? He had the hardest time to even turn that thing.
Well, that's because they're all old, but, and that's actually why we bought a valve exerciser last meeting. But, but you're right, it is, it is old and it is hard to turn. But that's where we quit having any responsibility. Everything from that box in belongs to you. That's your, your line.
And they never changed that, they never fixed that, they never put a new one of those in the Borough?
Well, it, it obviously worked because they shut your water off. So it doesn't need to be repaired or fixed.
They didn't shut my water off. They shut the Borough's water off that was running down the street. My water was fine in my house. I did not lose any water.
Even when they turned it off?
Not until they came into my house and turned my water off.
That makes sense.
Rainy, you left the, they left the water on so you had water.
No, I mean, even before that crap, that thing even happened, I never lost any water.
Yeah, but the leak was on your service though. You left the water on, so you had water. Because you said you were gonna take care of it right away. You see what I mean?
No, because you're not understanding what I'm saying. If it had been on my side of the property causing a problem, I would have been losing water and not even being able to have my own water being used. I'd be turning it on and nothing would be coming out because of it running out.
No.
Well, that's, well, you know what? This was a waste of time, so.
Well, it kind of is because.
Yeah, this is a waste of time. I was told that.
Trying to explain to you.
It doesn't matter, because if you're gonna say it's on my side of the property no matter what, and I'm stuck with it, I just felt that even if they had said to me, hey, we'll pay half of it. You know, I think it's ridiculous that I had to pay $1,800 for something that probably was caused by the workers that were hired by the Borough to pound the streets the way they were, and they dug that sidewalk piece up. You, you would have to have been on my property for two and a half years to feel it. You could ask any of my other neighbors on that street. My street took a beating during all of this since before COVID. We had the state coming through, they forced me to have my gas line moved to the other side of my house there. That was another set of digging. They had to put all new pipes in my basement for the gas line. They decided that because they were doing the street coming into town, that the Pendott says, okay, we have to get all gas line meters off, 10 foot off your property. So they turned it to the other side. I've had my property dug up so many times. Another problem I'll tell you, just to get it out of my system because I'm irritated now. When they came and they put all those yellow pieces at every curb, at every end of every sidewalk to go across the street that had the bubbles on them. Within two days, the one in my alley was cracked and broken. And I had to go to the Borough and make a complaint about that. And that was because they made it so flush with the street, which is what they did with all of them. And then one of those big trucks that worked in the alley and down this area rode over it and cracked it already. So then I had to go and deal with that, and that's what I've been dealing with.
So is it fixed?
Yes, after I have to complain.
Right, and the reason those mats are flush is because of ADA compliance. They have to be flush. If there's a lip, they're non-ADA compliant.
I'm not worried about that. I'm just saying that's another situation.
If it was cracked, it was fixed, it was addressed.
Going around my property. With not, without anybody caring enough to believe me, that it's all this work that was being done.
Can I have my pictures back?
I mean, I would have had water somewhere else in my yard and not just on that white piece of concrete that was running down the street. That's how I feel. And then they wanted me to pay again to do that concrete piece again on top. But I walked around, and I don't know if the manager did it or not. I talked to somebody who was still working in the area for Kinsley, and I asked her if they could fill that concrete back up. Because why should we have to do that too? And that's what I went through. But what would have happened if I did nothing? How much would have cost the Borough if I let water just run, run, and run and not even tell anybody?
But it was on your side of the service, your responsibility.
It was running down the street is what I'm telling you.
Okay, we're not getting.
You're not gonna get anywhere, because I'm living it, you're not.
Because I understand the difference between my responsibility and the municipality's responsibility.
Well, that's not the point. The point is, I felt that, what if I, what if I had done nothing?
We would have shut the water off.
When would they have known that?
Someone wasn't reporting it.
No, they hadn't. Three days went, two days went by, I reported it. You know? So, if you're not gonna do anything, I'll take my pictures back.
And so that, that, Rainy, that sidewalk that I see now, you repaired that. Has that been replaced prior? Or did you replace?
That was the original problem where the water leaked. After, after Kinsley put that in or whoever did it.
Kinsley put this sidewalk in?
Yes.
Well, how do we know that Kinsley didn't do something when they dug up and put in this sidewalk?
Sidewalk is.
I mean, I mean, if you, that's why I asked how deep it was, because some of them are shallow with the older houses. They, they might only be barely below rocks, so.
I'm just thinking, I mean, you can see where the curb, the curb is even broken. You know, if Kinsley replaced this, could they have damaged something on her side if the break was in here? When they replaced that?
Curb, you're at 18 inches.
Yeah, it's not, you're just down too far.
But the pipe has to come off and meet it at some point. It has to meet it.
Shut-off valve is in the middle of the sidewalk.
They all are, they all are.
Are they?
In the old, in the old part of town, they all are.
Mine's in the yard.
Yeah.
I, I was just wondering if that could I, I think attributed to.
It would have been helpful had you had some more information from Open Shaw as to where.
I know, I understand that.
I think that's what some of the folks are struggling with, is they don't know where the break was and where, what it was. That would have helped some of the Borough Council members understand the situation a little better.
And if I was smart enough, I would have asked him to give me the pipe. But, but they had to take it out through the inside of the house because they couldn't get it out through there, so I don't know.
So they still don't have the break?
Did they have one?
They, they don't have that type of thing.
I, I, since I paid them, I didn't ask them for anything. I just feel, I just feel that I should, next time something happens, I'll just let it happen. I'd like my other one back.
That's the only one I have.
I gave you, I, Brunel.
That's the one you gave me.
Here's another one I would like to have it back.
Did you have a vote through the debate?
Oh my God.
Yeah, that's the one I gave you.
Yeah, that's the one I gave you.
He came with one in a yellow thing. Yes. Thank you. Inefficiency. Nothing like living in a town for forty-some years and being treated like this.
I, I, I appreciate you bringing it to us, Burnell. And I, and I do, I understand her feelings and her situation. But number one, you establish a precedent. And number two, there really isn't any liability on the borough's part for something like that. I, you know, I, I think we privately, you and I can talk, and maybe we could start a GoFundMe or do something to help her out as, as individuals. But as borough council, I mean, that's what I was trying to explain. The box is here. That's where the shut-off valve is. This is yours. I, you know, it would be the same if it happened to me. I, you know, any line that's on your property belongs to you. So.
Yeah, the same token.
When she, when she was talking about saying it's so hard to turn now, I think the box was full of water. So, you're poking and hoping, trying to find, and I think that's what she was thinking on, it's so hard to turn. Because you're, you're just trying to feel for it, trying to.
Oh, you mean for the valve itself? Yeah, I mean, they're, yeah, they're not, they're not eat, and plus it's, you know, it's like, it's a key. So, whenever it drops down, you've got to hit the valve just right or else it won't turn. So.
So, I mean, it looks like you're struggling, but you're just trying to find that.
Trying to find it, right. Okay.
Right, it's down, it's down way.
Yeah, it's down away. So, we don't think that, you know, them putting in the, the sidewalk could have disrupted that or? No, I, I really don't. I mean, at four feet, you're not.
They would have to use a jack camera.
I mean, even if you use a jack camera, it's four foot down. I mean, I mean, if it were already, if it was already stressed, possibly, but it was going to break at some point. And it may have already had a pinhole leak in it. I mean, you know, just.
It's not the driver's pipe either.
Yeah.
It's not what?
The prop, and they didn't use the correct pipe.
Danny, did, did we, we inspected the new service when they, when Open Shaw put it in, connected the curb stop on her side?
Yeah, they did a jack hammer. But on the street, they, they probably milled the street.
So, that's when the sidewalk.
Yeah, it was actually looked at again once Bradley got done the new service and stuff. So, there wasn't leaking at that time. And.
But that's, that's when the sidewalk was replaced, after they put the new service on the curb stop?
And everything being dug up there, that's when all the water was coming through the sidewalk. Because that's where everything's as fresh. Now, it's loose and that's where the water may get its way out. It's not going to make the way out through your property because that wasn't disturbed. And that's when it was coming up through the sidewalk and running down the, running down the street.
That was the least resistance. I mean, you probably remember my front yard from over a year ago when I had a problem with the sewer backing up into my basement. It's the same thing, you know, that was installed, faulty whatever it was, but it's still on my, on my dollar. And I'll tell you right now, I spent a couple thousand more than that having my front yard excavated and then fixed and then back build and then having to do the sidewalk cut up and then the paper sidewalk put down. And it's, it's sinking now, just from eight feet of dirt settling. So.
Okay.
Welcome to owner of home.
Enjoy some homeownership. Does anyone else have anything? Okay. Do you want to go now, Don?
No, I'll wait for the mayor's report.
Okay. Approval of minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from both October eighteen and October twenty-seven.
So, have a motion a second. Does anyone have any corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, treasurer's report?
Just wanted to point out on the cash flow, you'll see that the assigned fund balance dropped in the month of October. That was because of the second application for payment to Jay O'Brien, bringing down that balance due on that project. So, the total there of the three fifty-one, that's the balance left on the last application for payment.
Any other questions?
How'd you get the, when it bounced down so far?
Oh, you're stealing my thunder.
Good, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah. Well, I'll just say now, but Victoria has just done a fantastic job. And we had approaching sixty thousand dollars in delinquencies. We are now at nineteen thousand three hundred. And I told her she's done a great job today. And I, I think that she's a very, very fine asset for the borough to have and the work that she's doing. And can't say enough good things about that. So, that's, that's really great.
Yeah, that's wonderful. I've never seen it that.
I've never seen it that way. I know.
Say, what's, what's the secret formula?
She, she just.
She times the forty-five.
How long does it go there?
She's half Sicilian. She makes them off. They can't refuse.
She made a call.
But yes, I think that's great.
Your coist?
Yes.
Inspection of the voice that's treatment plant. Has to be an annual inspection of that.
Yeah, we have some.
You're on strength.
PSA base, what was that for? Expanded membership?
The membership renewal.
Oh, for next year?
Yes.
Okay. Why, why do we pay three different, don't we need, just need one for the borough?
It's spread out over different.
Oh, we, oh, okay.
It's just, yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's not three different memberships. It's just spread out.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't understand that. Okay, that, that makes sense. And that is the plus. Correct, Andy?
Yes.
Andrew? That is, yes, it is.
Plus, okay.
Plus, and the membership, yes.
Keystone alarm, did they do some maintenance up at the?
Yeah, we're having some issues with the alarm system and.
I, I thought it had gone off a bunch of times and.
PSI pumping, is it a waste water pump or a rebuild?
Yeah, that had to do, there was a pump that was rebuilt and some rackets. I think that's still on that invoice.
That's a large check.
Yeah.
First capital installation?
Yep, that was, there was actually lead paint in the basement of the treatment plant control building. So, they came in and removed all that lead paint and then it's getting repainted. They had to come in and change ventilated and, yeah.
It's not changed. Carpet's from Mark. I'm assuming that was their installation shortage?
That's the fine, yep.
By the way, nice job. Carpet looks worn out.
Mm-hmm. It does.
Did you pick that out or did you bring your wife down?
Uh, that was, I, I brought some samples back and Brenda and Tara made it fine.
Nice job. Very nice. Thank you. I hear Ryan. Ryan's getting ready to speak.
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
She wants out of here.
I'm trying to draw it out, see if I can get you to do another one.
Do the other side of that computer go?
Second.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Dave, you keep talking out of my phone. It just, it just shocks me every time. I'm just. No, no, you're fine. You're fine. Okay, all right. We're going to have a meeting with Northern Central Railway, so I'm going to postpone that until after the meeting. And hopefully that'll be the next week or so. Mr. Mayor.
You're having a meeting about the parking?
Parking, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good idea. Um, give it, no, ahead, I'll defer to Donna so she can get out of here. I know, I appreciate your patience very much.
Okay, from last week's meeting, the chief requested a moment of silence at the beginning of the meeting in memory of Kay Hughes, the co-owner of the bike shop who had just passed away. He mentioned that she and her husband are both longtime supporters of the police department. Gail stated that the K-9 program did receive the notification that it is now a five oh one C three program.
Oh, wow.
So, that should help us with getting donations. The chief reported that Halloween was uneventful in all the boroughs. No major incidents to report. Chief received a letter of appreciation from Chief Damon of the York Area Regional Police, and that was for Officer Smith's assistance in locating and arresting the armed robbery suspect. That was back in October. The suspect had pulled off eighty-three to get gas at a gas station. They had put out a BOLO for him and he spotted the vehicle. With the help of the K-9, he was able to detain him until they came down and identified him as a suspect. They did recover a gun under the front seat of the vehicle, and he was responsible for two armed robberies. The chief stated there were no new arsons in New Freedom since many months ago, and he has nothing to report relating on the investigation. And the solicitor just brought up again that Northeastern Regional and York Area Regional Police were merging and would have a sixty department, sixty officer department. And that was pretty much it.
How, how large is their department going to be?
It'll be sixty, sixty officers. I think five, some five civilians or something, but yes. So, that's next year. Takes it back next year. I think that was it.
Thank you. I unfortunately have received a letter from Donna. She and I have had a brief conversation. I think we're going to continue it. She's looking to have more time with her family. And as of the end of December, we will be turning in her resignation, well, she has turned in her resignation, but it's effective, I guess, January one. Trying to talk to her, letting her know that, you know, she, she's very involved. She's very important to us. She's done an awful lot. You're a retired captain with Baltimore.
County.
County Police Department, which gives us a lot of, a lot of background and a lot of knowledge. Trying to talk her into maybe just staying on the police commission and if council would allow her to submit a written instead of having to come in here and wait and have a written. You, you can get the report. Well, I, I can, but she does it so much better than I do. She's.
I nominate Dennis.
Ah, what if we don't pick her trash up for years? Or give her free trash for, picked up for a year. But, well, I'm, I'm talking to her how we might be able to still utilize her expertise. We'll see. I know if you go, we're going to really miss you. But thank you for everything you do. I appreciate it. It's not until January, right? No, but I gotta, that gives me a little bit of time. I gotta work on her. We could get somebody else on the finance committee. And she does a lot more than everybody knows. And police, she, she did do that. I, I really don't have, everything's been kind of copacetic. I have noticed with the fall, and I've discussed it with Andrew, I'm finding people don't like to put their leaves out to be picked up by our municipal guys. They'd rather burn them in your backyard. So.
Okay, they're allowed to do that?
No, you're not allowed to do that. And Andrew and I have had a conversation. We have several people that are developing burn barrels. And I have asked him to please if we notice that, to gently inform them that they're not allowed. I know on my street, I had occasion where I can't even open my back door or any of my windows because my house fills with smoke. I have two people that live close to me that have complained because they've got asthma and phazema and they can't open their doors and windows. So, I think, Andrew, you've taken care of that. If I'm not mistaken, I can't see. Shake your head, yes. So, I appreciate that. But I, you know, because we record this, I think people need to know, you can't burn your limbs and your leaves in your backyard. Believe me, it'll, these people I saw, I don't know how they kept from burning down their garage. They were three feet away from the garage. I thought it was going to melt the siding and the flames had to be about nine feet in the air. So.
What's, what's the protocol? You know, because I'm not walking by enough. If you see somebody burning, what's the protocol? Call the police?
Call fire department.
Fire department.
That's what any ordinance is written.
Fire.
Yep. Call the fire department because there's sparks. You don't know if they're close to you, they land on your roof. It's kind of, it's kind of like the fireworks thing. One of them lands on your roof, that's all it takes. So, just to remind people, there is no burning in the borough other than fire pits, small fire pits. And I don't know, do they have to be covered? Is that any warrants?
If it's not, it should be.
We'll, we'll double check. But please, you know, if you have a fire pit, have the courtesy to, to cover them and, and put them out before you go to bed. Don't let them burn after you go to bed. I haven't really seen any major problems, incidences down at the park or the parking lot since our last meeting. I think police are still circling around that. And I, I do appreciate that from them. Okay, that's really all I have. Okay, thank you. I did, I, one thing I almost forgot to mention. Larry, Larry O'Brien has resigned from the planning commission.
I'll do it over there.
Okay.
We'll do it over there.
Okay, managers' report?
Nothing really on here that we haven't discussed already. Obviously, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two budget, having their pie chart kind of breaking out the general fund expenditures and where the municipal tax dollars are allocated. I think it's a good chart to kind of show, remind us and remind the public of what percentage, again, municipal tax dollars are allocated in those different buckets. So, good information to have. As far as public works renovation, we did have a pre-bid meeting today. Had quite a few contractors show up. Those bids are due Friday, November nineteenth. So, during the meeting on December thirteenth, we should be able to review those submitted bids and then hopefully have a recommendation from warehouse. We're still working with warehouse on developing street projects for next year. Obviously, those funds are currently in proposed budget. We're working to kind of get that list down to something that's within that budget. So, that can be a little bit difficult based on, obviously, the price of materials right now and, and labor. Crosswalk improvements, I know that's been on everybody's radar for a while now. We have everything at this point submitted to PennDOT for their review. But where we're at in the year, we're most likely not going to see anything until the spring at this point. Again, that was a delay, just misinformation really from PennDOT on the type of forms that we were to submit and getting the drawings and everything. So, still going to get done. So still gonna get done, but held back a little bit. I believe at the last meeting, we did talk a little bit about the hazard mitigation, Phase 1 application. Those applications were submitted. The next information received from FEMA is hopefully that those projects are eligible for funding, and we can continue those applications and try to get that funding. And last, we're setting, drawing the line in the sand as far as getting the new site up. So a dark meeting on December 13, I'd kinda like to, I guess, pull the curtain back on the new website and show everybody, so we'll get that up.
Can we put that on Savvy Citizen and have that as maybe a training, a slight training, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, so that people know how to navigate it?
Sure.
And then that people who wanna come might not be familiar with navigating websites. They can get an idea how to use it.
We don't have a budget meeting in December, do we?
Well, it'll be approved.
It'll be approved, but we don't have a 6 o'clock designated budget meeting.
Yeah, it's back to 6:00.
It's back to 6:30. I wonder if we could do a brief educational seminar prior to...
Well, we'll just do it at 6:30, 'cause it's...
You call it an educational seminar?
Should only be... I can't imagine it taking 10, 15 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Mr. Solicitor.
So we successfully found, with Andy's help, the actual lease. It's on the Pleasant, I guess it's... Yeah.
I defer that back to Donnie. Donnie had a card, had information. We're able to make the contact, so...
Great. So here's what we found. There is a lease in place. We believe it started in the signed September of 2000. It probably went into effect early 2001. That's when the timeframe started running, 'cause it was either from six months from the lease or it was from when they took occupancy of the site. It has five five-year renewals. So it started with five years. Five five-year renewals take us through 2031. Okay, so it's five plus 25 is 30. That takes us to 2031. It goes up 5% a year. Started at $3,000 per year in 2000. Went up to $3,150 and on from there. Beginning in 2021, it went up to around $36.46 is my number. It probably is $36.50. So that is what we have. So I guess that leaves Borough Council a couple of options. One is scrap the idea of selling that land because you have an income-producing property. I don't believe we're paying taxes on that, possibly because the Tax Assessor Office doesn't know we're receiving income on that. So technically, that could be taxed, but I will tell you, the lease provides, if there are taxes, that the last C will have to pay those taxes. So we may wanna let the Tax Assessor Office know that. The second thing that we could do is say, well, we're gonna offer up, but we're gonna retain the lease payments through the end of the term. So you sell the property, you get most of the tax rolls, and you get retained this lease rental. Or three, you just say, like I said, "The heck with it. We're not doing anything. We're gonna keep it and wait till the end of the term." Now, this document has a weird term, and I've never seen it in a public lease, but it says that they have the right, the option to purchase the area of lease. Well, if it's worth more than $2,000, we can't sell it directly to them. We have to bid it anyway. So I'm not sure that's an enforceable provision of the lease anywhere. But again, that would be limited to the 180 by 160 area that they occupy. So that's where we're at. I don't think that... I haven't heard anything more on any interest in this site.
No.
And any additional interest, so we just need direction from the board, the Borough Council, as to what they might wanna consider.
We can subdivide it off, all right?
I don't know that you can do that, because I don't think 160 by 180 lot is a valid existing lot.
It's a formidable lot size, 160 or so.
You'd have to take off enough to make it an existing lot. There's an easement that went with this that gives them access to the site from the river. So it... I mean, technically, you could probably figure out a way to orient it in that way.
Isn't that kinda shaped like a wedge?
It's a pie, yeah.
Yeah.
That easement goes back along the... From the building, back along the tracks.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Drawing it through.
Yeah.
It sounds... I mean, look, for what you might get for it, I'm not sure it's worth doing anything until...
This is all dead and done and said and done.
But that's certainly the Borough Council's call. But we wanted to report back on, and again, there's no rush. I think do one thing or the other at this point. It was signed in 2000. And it's good through 2030, so...
Is it a motion that we do nothing? Till 2031?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Those?
All right.
My vote is aye. Okay. Engineering?
The Knox box, that's...
It's... At the last meeting, you authorized advertisement. Because we have so many, that's why I put that in, you know, we have so many ordinances that need... I'd rather advertise at one time all the ordinances and try to save some money. So that was... Approval was given to authorize advertisement, but not...
Oh, okay. It was listed under Solicitor. I thought maybe he had something to add about it.
Not this agenda.
Oh, was that... Oh, never mind. That's October.
Does anyone have any questions on any of the engineering reports?
It's not necessarily the engineering report, but with the mapping that they've done in the borough, where are they at with that? It's curious from a... Are they done standpoint, but also with the subco-monocle point that we talked about?
They are 40% down in the borough, and they're still working on picking up features.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's physically out in the borough, mapping everything, all the water?
Yep. Yeah, they're doing water, sewer, stormwater, street signs, streetlights.
Okay. Zoning?
So a lot of the usual characters, but one, new one on... Let's just say one, two, push one down. It was one that was... I thought we were gonna see last month.
That's part of why that ordinance is up for...
Strengthening?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Yep.
Did we not think that it would be enforceable as it is? Or do we not think it would be enforceable?
It's enforceable. There's not much... There's really not a way. I mean, you basically have that 60 days, and then after that, right away, you're going into filing at a magistrate level, rather than just being able to remove the violation and take care of it.
And I have to ask a final question. Why is... Why are some things 60 days and some things 10 days?
Well, the reason that that ordinance, we believe, was 60 days is because it referred to more physical structures. So if someone put a decorative mailbox in that's in the right of way and brick all around it or stone all around it, they're gonna need more than 10 days to remove that. If you're talking about a code violation, that's usually at the discretion of the code official. So if it's as simple as mowing your grass, it might be 10 days. If it's as simple as if it's something that you have, that you need to tear down a structure because it's deteriorated, you're gonna get 60, 90, 120 days. So it's really based on the situation. But in that case, that ordinance was specific to say 60 days.
Okay.
We had no other option around that. That's part of the reason why they're mending that ordinance, to give it a little bit more teeth and try to get compliance quicker is on the agenda.
And they've decided to not go along with the ordinance, right?
Correct.
It's still there.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't understand why you're doing this, getting those and dumping them and picking them up.
That's not what the ordinance does.
But the new ordinance...
The new ordinance does. You can remove violation, which we can do under property maintenance things, but not under this structure in the right way.
Besides your borough property, it's on the street in the right way.
That's public property.
Okay.
The question you get into there then is, is if you just take it and throw it away, have you basically taken that property from them? Like, if you tow a car, the car still... You can still retrieve the car. You have to pay the fees associated with that. So the question is, do you store basketball net?
Right.
Well, that's what the new ordinance basically states, that we do, correct?
You... Right. Give the notice. After that notice, it's removed. They're given another time period to come pick it up. After that time period, it's disposed of.
Okay.
I don't know that I would do it in the zoning for our family.
No, it's not.
Oh, no? Okay.
It's a standalone ordinance.
Yeah.
And I think arguably, we have the power to move it just under the Borough Character of the Center of Streets, but it's how the ordinance is done.
Speaking of vehicles, I think the last meeting, we talked about some vehicles that were being parked up at the community center.
Yes.
Are those the ones that were then used for training for the Fire Department?
Two of them.
Two. Okay, so there were more than two up there?
Two vehicles that were up there were used by the fire company. The rest were vehicles by residents. That was on this report. I believe we had more up here more recently, and that we need to have a conversation with the fire company that that area needs to be cleaned up.
There's glass and every... All over the place, mixed in with the... Stanley, how are they gonna clean that up? And who's liable if some kid goes up there playing and...
I imagine it's gonna be the borough parking lot.
The borough or the fire company? They have insurance, correct? And since they did it.
But are the other vehicles removed? I don't remember. It was up there a couple days ago.
Yeah, the ones... Excuse me, the ones in those pictures, they were removed. I did speak to that owner. They took care of that, but then new ones appeared, not from them, from other ones, so...
There are a couple of people that park up there, I think, on a daily basis. And I mean, they can, correct?
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue of parking there. It's an issue of putting junk vehicles there or wrecked vehicles there and them sitting there with parts missing.
Right, right.
Yeah. Tags expired. That's the issue.
Yeah, they have to be licensed and...
Registered, licensed, inspected.
Yeah. Okay. Land development?
No new plans received?
You okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Recreation?
Some of these things have already been talked about, so I'm not gonna rehash everything. Maddox was at the meeting, brought the same information. They did suggest that he kinda try to reinvigorate the GoFundMe page. They shared it on their Facebook page. And that's why I was curious to see if that had kinda reinvigorated everything with some additional donation. The Day I Hope event that they had, Eric Diaz sent the commission a very nice note, thanking them for helping with kids' own events. Concert Series for 2022, kinda weird saying that, but it's right around the corner. They secured Danny Dolan and his band First Class for the first two concerts in the park. That'll be on 8/13/22 and 9/17/22. I don't know, did you already add those to the Savvy Citizen app? Okay. I don't wanna make that question, so I just wanna put that out there.
Well, I mean, they don't have times or sponsoring them and...
Okay. All right, we'll get additional information on that. Tennis, the adult fall tennis session ended on the 23rd of October. There were 12 participants and about $300. We're continuing to have drop-in sessions in November, weather permitting, and the cost will be $10 a person. Pickleball, sounds like they're still getting a lot of new members. Pickleball reported... Excuse me, Mr. Garvey, reported that pickleball is up and running with 23 participants, and they've received $420 in income and still owe... And currently still owe, excuse me, $374 as we pay off the cost of the nets and balls for the equipment. That was largely it. Farmer's Market, they will not be able to do the farmer's market due to weather. There was some discussion about approaching the Fire Department to see if they wanted to do one of their fundraisers, like the... What do they do? Chicken once a month? Try to get that to coincide with the farmer's market to get some additional foot traffic. The chili cook-off, they've decided not to do. Nothing for the children and teens. That was really it.
As far as sponsorships for concerts, I mean, they pretty much have to pick somebody and go ask. I mean, that's...
Yep.
You know, I mean, you already know that Gemcraft is interested. And I already told them that there are a couple other people that were interested, so...
You did pass that along, correct?
So, yeah. But they actually need to do... You know, they actually need to ask.
We've been having over $12,000. Are they going to give Maddox a donation?
There was some talk about that. I wanted to find out, just procedurally. I was gonna ask after the meeting about how exactly they would go about doing that. I think he wanted... I think they would like to do something, yes.
I think, yeah, all they need to do is make the motion and pass it.
At the time of the meeting, because he wasn't actually on the agenda, he needs to get all the agenda for them.
So we know how this works. Somebody's chair. There's one chair. We're gonna get WD-40. Put that on your list, Donnie.
Close my hearing gates again.
Now, just to be sure, and I do go to the rec council. They need to approve it from their end and then come to council. For council's approval, spend the money. I think that's the way I read that.
Is that the way it is written?
I think that's the way it's written, so... I just want to be sure when we go to the next rec meeting that they operationally know how that progresses.
Yeah, the council's gonna have that off-line in the conversation.
Gotcha. Okay. Gotcha, okay.
Ian, did you have anything for the EMS, nothing there? Dave, did you have anything?
No.
Okay.
Anybody hear anything about how the senior center's doing? I know you're no longer kind of involved in that, but.
I haven't talked, I know, at least I think my dad's still on the board, I have not talked specifically about.
I was just wondering how they're progressing, you know, are they, are they out of COVID or are they doing?
The last that I had heard anything, they were doing very well financially. And I know that they're providing meals, they have been providing meals either through drive-through.
Still drive-through.
I don't think that they're meeting at the center.
Well, I haven't talked to my dad, but it has been a while.
But it may be, they may have started something. They're, they're doing a lot of stuff.
They have some people who are coming, not, not a whole bunch, but they have some people.
But they do a lot online, it seems like they have a lot of contests and things like that that are very.
Oh, good, oh, that's good, keep people occupied.
Yes, involved.
Yeah.
But I think, I've heard this at several municipalities, the Department of Aging determine when they can start serving meals again, so they're stuck, whenever the state says they can do it.
They're, they're still.
It's not before that.
Right, they're still delivering at home.
Right, right.
But the aggregate meals where people get together and are close, I don't think their agency and agents allowing that. And as far as they're gathering together, it must be very tight, it can't be that many people that go because I don't think their agency and agents.
Yeah, it's only like a handful of people, just to get out, I guess.
Okay, the next thing is the ordinance for the adland soliciting. Do you have any questions on it, comments?
This is the final draft after the last meeting, there were some changes. So at this point, unless there's any problems with it, it's pretty much final review and up for authorization for advertisement.
I'll make a motion that we authorize advertisement for this particular ordinance.
One second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
You too.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, the next one is. Oh, this is the purchasing.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, this is, okay. Yeah, anyway, back, back to what I started to say before, Larry O'Brien, who has been on the planning commission for some time, has resigned from the planning commission. He's, he's done a great service for the borough, being on the planning commission, and I would need a motion to accept his resignation.
Like a motion that we accept the resignation of Larry O'Brien.
Second.
Number first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye.
Did you?
You did. Oh, you did. You have to fill out a form. You have to fill out a form.
Or if you, if you.
Upstaves. Oh, that's right. Okay. Okay, we had been talking for some time about the setting up limits for what borough manager can spend without coming back to council. So this actually, I think, works out really nicely. I'll just read it real quick. Those included, the borough manager, New Freedom Borough is authorized to make the following purchases. So those included and within the annual approved budget, and Borough Council, of course, approves the budget, not requiring public bidding and within 10% of the originally budgeted amount. So in other words, if we're buying chemicals and it's within 10% of the original budgeted amount, then that, that just gets approved. That's just, that's kind of necessary just to conduct business on a normal daily basis. Unanticipated expenses relating to maintenance and repair of buildings, vehicles, equipment, and network infrastructure not exceeding $10,000, and expenses during emergencies, including disasters, declarations that directly relate to said emergency. So that would be if we had to go out and buy, replace a generator quickly or whatever during an emergency, that would obviously be something that we would want done. Does anyone have any questions?
I did, and it had to do with the 10%, and I guess I was overlooking the bidding process. If it doesn't require public bidding, I don't know if there's a max amount of things on our budget that doesn't require bidding. I guess that's what I was thinking.
So what is?
Like, I was thinking if it's a, if it's a $200,000 or $500,000 budget item, then.
Oh, that would require bidding, yeah.
Unless, unless you're buying like a street sweeper or coast stars and, you know, you budgeted $130,000 for a street sweeper and now it's one eight, fifteen percent, so.
More, more, yeah, than that.
So anything more than $165,000, you'd have to come back to council.
Oh, okay, all right, because I guess that's what I was thinking is, if we really went up and it's still within the 10%, but it's a big, big item and a big number, should it come back, at least so that we
I see, yeah.
are aware of it. That, that was what I was thinking, if there was any need to have a number on there.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
That's it, just the big stuff. But I think all of the big, big stuff are bidded.
Yeah, the only, the only way you would get around likes, or that could play in is if you're buying a big piece of equipment, it's coast stars, and it went up significantly, which it really shouldn't because if we are budgeting for that, we already have an estimate even, but it could still happen, it could still happen.
But I, I think. I think because of the bidding, I, I won't answer any more questions, but I was just worried it was.
Yeah, I mean, the bid limit's twenty-two, four, twenty-eight.
Probably the one's next year again.
Yeah, it goes up.
Yeah, it goes up.
It goes up every year, yeah.
Tightly a little bit.
I think it's twenty-one, maybe it's twenty-one seven this year.
It's twenty-one something, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, do you wanna go ahead and advertise this?
This is just a policy, so it's a resolution.
Ah, okay, and I, I have, I do have a suggestion. The very last sentence, expenditures that do not meet any of the criteria shall require consideration and approval by Borough Council during a regularly scheduled meeting. Can we add or special, regularly scheduled or special meeting? Say there's something that really needs our attention quickly.
I want you to say a, a public meeting.
Ah.
Publicly advertised meeting.
Yeah, during a public.
Is that ten?
You could just say public meeting.
Days advertising?
No.
A special meeting requires 24 hours, so.
Yeah, that's.
As long as you're publicly advertised.
Yeah, if it's an emergency. Yeah. And I guess if there is any direct emergency which requires the mayor's declaration, he and I would just work together on that.
That's kinda why I added that last one, because, you know, during that disaster declaration meeting, some of your bidding requirements are.
Yeah. You don't have to do it.
Right.
So just change it to meet, um, public meeting?
Publicly advertised meeting.
Yeah, that'll work, yeah.
Yeah.
Never know.
Oh, well, I'll just reprint and rewrite, but it, as long as it's approved or.
Right. And can we make a motion to accept a resolution with the law?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution with the changes noted.
One second.
Use program.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay. This is already, this is some.
This is, so the, the next thing is an agreement to participate with the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs for unemployment compensation coverage. Currently, the borough is a self-insured reimbursable employer as viewed by the state. So if you do have an unemployment complaint, you're paying dollar for dollar, basically. This is, you know, an arrangement that PSAB has, it's a pretty good plan, as you can see, it breaks down there. First and second years, you're not really getting that coverage until you kind of build your balance up, but that's pretty much what we have now, so it wouldn't really impact any. And basically, this gets recovered if you have employees separated and they do go after unemployment compensation. Not saying that's going to happen, but it's a good safety blanket to have in place. We have insurances for everything else. Why not have it for unemployment compensation?
Yeah, how much is it?
It's based, so it's the first $10,000 worth of wages. So the max that you would pay per employee per year is $260.
Sixteen will be covered? Well, I guess considering. We can't just be part of Pennsylvania unemployment compensation?
You can, like you are now, but you're opening yourself up for dollar for dollar. So if someone does have a claim, you're paying every single dollar.
This is a way to pool your risks with other municipalities, with other boroughs. Then you can just keep your fingers crossed, it'll quit a few years after, and you won't find a number for unemployment.
I was gonna say, they have to terminate it in order for them to.
Right, right. And unfortunately, unemployment has been very generous in the past two or three years as to the reasons why folks can leave, separate from employment and still be entitled to unemployment.
It's pretty difficult, so it's, when, from the employer's standpoint, unemployment comp, even if you have your documentation, it's.
So we're looking, so it's basically, it's 41, 16 a year?
Eleven, thirty-six, yeah.
I don't know the size of the good idea.
So insurance policies.
Yeah.
It's like when you take life insurance, if you're betting that you're gonna die and they're betting you're not.
Right.
Okay. So we need a motion?
Term one.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion to, and a second to participate in the PSAB unemployment compensation plan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye.
We're on the.
Board of Appeals?
Yeah. So, if you're familiar, York County has a UCC Board of Appeals to hear cases involving claims of, from the building inspector, that really relate to the UCC in general. It's difficult, I think, for us at this point to staff the boards that we have, not try to rely on if someone does file an appeal, we have to come up with people sitting on a board.
Is this only commercial buildings?
This is, this is any, this is any appeal from under the northern code.
Yeah. So York County set this up back when UCC went into.
In 2004.
Yeah.
Yep.
I believe at that time, New Freedom said they wanted to get part of it. I think it only makes sense now, why shouldn't, why shouldn't New Freedom try to staff the board of appeals that you might only have once in a great while? Let's focus on the boards that we need to, and the people that we need to run and let the county handle this one, so.
And I think we, we tried to get some people on a UCC board, didn't we, and we just couldn't get anybody.
Yeah, it's hard to find people who want, in fact.
That are qualified, this, this really requires some qualification.
Yeah, the, the law specifically states, certain design professionals, certain contractors. And I think when we put this together back in '04, Kenny Greer and different people were in town and they agreed to sit in the board. But I think the last one we had, I think we paid, I think we paid all of our board members their professional salaries to come and sit here from architectural and engineers and so on and so forth, so.
Well, this is a good idea, too. By the way, while I'm thinking of it, can you put on Savvy Citizen that the planning commission's spot is open for, to be designed effective as of last meeting? And if everybody could, if you know of anybody who's interested or qualified, or even just interested, then, yeah.
And the other nice thing is if a certain citizen files an appeal to UCC board, they have to go to the county and not come to you.
Yeah, very nice, yeah. I don't know who that one. Okay. Yeah, I agree.
Why don't we put the fee into the ordinance? What, I mean, when are we gonna determine what our fee, municipality fee is?
There's no fee to us. Fees to the county.
Yeah.
A fee in an amount to be determined by the municipality shall be paid by the applicant to the municipality prior to scheduling of the appeal hearing or request within the county board.
I think that gets passed on from, from the municipality to the county. They would file it here, but we just pass it over.
Yeah, they're gonna set their own fee schedule.
He's right, it does say that.
Yeah.
The way it's worked in other municipalities is the county says, this is the fee, we adopt the fee and then that's what they pay, we pass it on to the county, and they file their application.
Similar to.
So basically, we don't get anything out of this one. Okay. I mean, we, we get the.
We get the benefit of not having to do anything with it, that's.
Five board members to see if you can hear the case.
Yeah.
To provide the service.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, the ordinance, ordinance that's listed.
Just on, just after.
UCC, yeah, it's an advertisement, yeah.
He does spelling here on the next to the S page, withdrawal is not two words.
Oh, that's just county's.
This is a county's.
Oh, this is county's form, okay, well, then they can.
That's how I usually speak, I usually speak withdrawal.
Withdrawal.
Okay. We have a first. Okay, we have a first and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Look at the ordinance right here.
All right, so this is.
This is the basketball ordinance.
This is, yeah, structure's in the right of way.
Yeah.
So really what it does is defines a temporary structure. And then under enforcement defines, under section B, what occurs when a temporary structure is placed in the right of way.
And this is, we're not gonna run into the.
Closing the barn door after the horses left the barn, problem with this.
I think if we give them the notice, again, the difference with towing is, is there's very specific ways you can dispose of property under state law. So there's ways that the title gets transferred and so on and so forth. We just don't have that here, so that's, the claim will be open to is, hey, you took my basketball net. You somehow deprived me of the property, even though you gave me notice twice. So you'd be on, you know, the worst case scenario, you're on the hook for the cost of your basketball. I'm not sure who would say that. I guess the other question is, if you wanna, wanna bag them for a fee on restoring it, leave it there for technically, is that the name?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yep.
What's the stuff saying that, okay, so we, they don't move, and we take it down, we owe a hundred bucks or whatever for a new one, we give them a hundred bucks, we put another one up there, then we just, it just...
We start over again, it's kind of like, it's kind of like grass cutting, right? You can cut someone's grass after you give them the notice and charge them that fee, and then they let the grass grow again, and we start the process over again. I, I wish I had a better answer for you.
Couple guys need Drew to send over.
Well, we can set a fee by resolution, so, you know, I mean...
You may, you may set that fee higher each time.
Yeah.
For first effect, second effect.
First pay, twenty-five bucks, then the second one is a hundred or whatever.
You, you don't have a resolution with it?
Well, no, because this is just, it's a draft.
So once we get this approved, then it's ready to...
Do a resolution. But in that case, we'll be doing the resolution, the miscellaneous fee schedule, we would just catch it.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea, okay.
Do we redo that every year?
It's going to be redone every year.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering.
It needs to be updated, yeah, kept current, which, that's all we just did, no? All that was done was there was to clean it up, none of the fees were adjusted.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to...
Go on.
I have a motion to advertise this ordinance. I have a, I have two seconds. All in favor?
And it wasn't me.
Opposed? My vote is aye. All right.
Now, this is food trucks, and we separated this from the pedaling on purpose.
Yeah, I think that was a good idea.
I think it's a good idea, too.
Sure.
I have a question and a comment.
Okay.
You know, there are food trucks that come and stay in the parking lots that sell ice cream and shaved ice. And I'm afraid, when you talk about the vision of this ordinance, applies to food trucks, but not to mobile vehicles that sell ice cream and shaved ice. You don't really say that are moving about the streets, and I don't know what the best way to say that, but you could have, we've had ice cream trucks.
Yeah, Gilice sometimes will just sit there in the parking lot and sell along the rail trail.
Yeah, and I think what you're really trying to catch here is the one that ding ding ding, goes up and down the streets and the kids all run around.
The good humor man.
Good humor man, no, I wasn't gonna say that. But I don't know how to say it.
Sure, that's a good point. Yeah, that is a good point.
Does not apply, you say, mobile seasonal basic service. You know, maybe seasonal basic service vehicles that move throughout the borough on public roads. Does that make sense?
So if they have to drive to get there.
Somebody has to drive them, you mean? But, yeah, I mean, that are driven on the public streets, does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess the question is, do you wanna capture them in this ordinance or not?
I was under the impression that councils did not want to.
Okay.
As far as, you're talking about the ones that just go around.
But then what are you, you are, how are you differentiating them, though? Or am I just making...
No, I, no, I know what you're saying, it's almost like non-stationary.
Right, exactly. I mean, what you're talking about with food trucks, I think we all are thinking of that stationary vehicle somewhere in the parking lot.
I, I, I think we're, I think we pick it up, though, when we say food truck. The definition of a food truck, it says that it's temporarily parked upon a public street. So if Gilice parks and sells from that location, then he has to get a permit. If he drives around the streets ringing a bell, then he does not. I think, I think it's okay, I think we're all right with that. What do you think?
I, I think, I think you'll have people who say, well, I only serve my tacos from May to September, so I'm seasonal. I, I think that's what you'll get into with that sort of distinction, is that you'll have people that wanna avoid paying whatever permit fee is, however low it is.
It's like ten bucks.
Right, but they'll, they'll argue that point with Andy and say, well, I don't, I don't go, or I'm a substiti, I'm a teacher, I only do this from June to August. So that's seasonal for, that's what you're running into with that kind of distinction. Is it a big deal, though, if you're gonna give them ten, if it's a $10 permit?
We just wanted to know whether they're...
If it's an ice cream truck, do you wanna, I mean, is it a big deal to have them get a permit for the entire summer? I guess that's where I'm going with this, is, do you need this, do you need to exclude them? And just, if you cover everybody, you cover everybody, and you don't have to worry about who you enforce this against and who you don't. That's all I'm saying.
But is, isn't a food truck for seven days?
Not, I'm not really sure, I think that's the...
No, it's for a year. And if you got it on January first, it'd be good for the whole year. Why, why don't we just strike out the mobile thing and, you know, I mean, I'm not gonna go chasing after someone that's driving around ringing a bell, but...
I thought that was a good idea.
Yes. Remember, plenty of times...
Ice cream.
Getting home a bike, chasing down a street.
You sure you wanna go vending from 7:00 AM? We don't even allow lawn mowers till 8:00.
What?
Some of us are up much earlier than that.
And some of us aren't.
What about the breakfast?
The whistle, the train whistle woke us up at 7:00 o'clock this morning, and we're, what the heck?
I mean, the other thing is, some of these apply to, like, you don't really want an ice cream truck parked in front of a fire hydrant, right?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Regardless, so that's what they're applying, well, they, you know, they may just stop where the kids congregate and they just may happen to be in front of a fire hydrant. So it seems to me like, it might apply to both, but if you wanna, come up with, try to come up with something.
If you just strike that line, then I guess somebody will challenge it, but...
I think most people are just gonna pay the 10 bucks.
Yeah, I mean...
No, we could revise the fee schedule, it could be 15 next year.
The, the pain is the stuff you have to provide. I mean, the licenses of getting that stuff together, it's got nothing to do with the $10 for all, for where it's worth. It's, I gotta get my, you know, my permit from Department of Ag and show you, and I gotta get this, and I gotta get that, so that's, that's the pain. But they should have it anyways, if they're, even if they're doing this in different municipalities, I can't imagine if they're legit.
So why don't we just, you wanna just strike the ones that's...
What was that about the mobile?
Yeah, this ordinance does not apply to mobile seasonal basic services and such.
I don't think we should change it any time, but that's fine.
I'll just leave it the way it is?
Yeah, like, I mean, if they, just say the farmer's market's setting up early, and somebody wants to start setting up some breakfast.
Yeah, I think you're right, I think we just leave it alone.
Yeah, I think those times are reasonable.
I'm happy with that, are you happy with that?
We aren't changing it.
We're not gonna change times.
I'd, I'd like to eat a pie, but that's...
Sorry, I gotta change that.
Sorry.
As long as they're not in front of my house, then it's...
Have you talked to anyone on the insurance provision? I'm not saying that's too high, but...
I'm thinking the same thing.
It's a million dollar for model injury, $500,000. You should probably have that, if you're a legitimate business, but I don't know if the small operators will have that much insurance. So you may get pushback.
Yeah.
Yeah, you think Gilice has a million dollar, it's worth the insurance?
It's not that expensive.
It's, it's not expensive, you're right, I don't disagree with you.
I have a million dollars on, you know, it's...
I mean, I have a million dollar umbrella rider, too, so it's $59.
Yeah, it's really cheap.
I think everybody should... What category that falls under?
But, but I don't know, I don't know what that costs, so... You don't want people in here lined up to say, you're gonna run out of business, the ice cream truck. If it's an unreasonable ask. Who do you guys use for insurance?
Call Keller Brown.
Call Keller Brown, get an idea, what a reasonable policy.
Oh, there you go.
That would be my suggestion, just so you have a, kind of a workable number.
So we're gonna table this one?
I mean, your, your food trucks that park aren't gonna be hitting anybody, that's the other, the other thing is, they're not driving around, they're gonna have their auto policy, 'cause they have to have an auto policy, so she, they should be covering something anyway. So if we wanted something to be additional to that, just get an idea, like, what a reasonable number. I do that for construction projects, I call the insurance people and say, hey, what do you think's a fair amount? And they always say too much, but needs to be someone backing this up.
How, how, what do they do? Do they just call their insurance company and say, look, I'm, I'm going to New Freedom for, the fire company's having a event, and I'm going here one time, I need to add them to my policy? Is that how they do it?
Out of that's additionally insured, certificate of order, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
That's easy for them to do.
The fireworks people do that all the time. Anyone that puts off fireworks does that every single place they go. Yeah, carnival, carnival, I don't really do that.
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't cost anything additional, it's one of your agents to provide that.
Oh, okay, it's not specifically gonna say Borough of New Freedom.
Well, yeah, at the bottom, it'll say additionally insured Borough of New Freedom.
On your court certificate of liability, it'll have it right at the bottom, and it'll say additionally insured, and it'll say New Freedom Borough.
Doesn't seem like it's a pain in the butt to make them do that?
A lot of, a lot of your food truck events, your bigger ones, they're, they're gonna have to provide, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I can always, I should say...
I'm thinking if we really wanna get into some events, is that gonna be a deterrent?
No.
Okay, that's my answer.
Your legitimate food trucks know that, and I've dealt with them a bunch, that, you know, you need my certificate of insurance, yeah, they'll send it, but that's not...
It's usually not big ass.
Okay.
Yeah, insurance companies do that all the time.
What's a good point, though, about the amount, just to verify that that's...
Yeah, if we, if they have to go out and buy another million dollars, half a million dollars of coverage, and they have to spend extra money, then they validate it. If they don't have to spend anything, but they have to go certificate of insurance, they're like, okay. That's the difference.
Makes sense?
This is very extensive.
Yeah, and how limited is it? What if you have a Girl Scout dragging cookies in a wagon, is that...
No, no.
Oh, she's now a solicitor, okay. Peddler?
I, I need gone to the parking lot. 'Cause we tabled that one, right?
Did we?
Yeah, I think we have to find out answers to those questions, don't we?
Do we have to make a motion to table it?
What do you care, you're laying in the couch, watching TV.
She wants to get back to just watching TV.
Watching TV. Do you wanna approve it for advertising?
No, 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 that's, that's table it, that, that's the motion of the second.
Okay.
All in favor of tabling the pedaling ordinance until we get the additional...
Not pedaling.
No, food trucks, sorry, food truck ordinance until we get the additional information. All in favor?
Aye.
I was, my vote is aye. Now, Ken, I'm gonna ask a question, I know everyone's getting tired, but what if there's an organization that wants to do something and we just, can we waive that as a...
Council can always waive whatever, you know?
So who are you waiving that for? The Boy Scouts or not the Girl Scouts, the...
Well, I...
You have to be very careful with waiving based on missions. Because if you waive it for the catheters, do you waive it?
Same, right, the rec council, the rec council wants to do something and they bring two people in, you know, just, and we're not even taking anything, we just want somebody there doing...
Well, I mean, that will happen, 'cause during the concert, they wanna have a beer truck and whatnot, and...
So I think you definitely want to have your liability insurance.
Yeah, but you really do, you do need to make sure that, yeah, I would, I would get them...
All right, I just didn't know if there would be any instances where we wouldn't want that to... Make them get a permit, go through all that, just to have one event.
Now, I, I thought we were just gonna put signs up and have it be a residential only, but this has them actually having to go get, go get permits. That means when Aunt Sally comes to visit the grandkids, she can't park there unless she goes and gets a permit.
I think she can't, oh, I guess not.
And there's one other thing I need to check on for you guys. Most parking ordinances, you have to have a traffic study that supports the enforcement of the order. I don't make up the law.
I...
They, they don't have a study to say what...
To say that it's, that street supports the need for traffic regulations on that street.
What's your approach, really, here?
I, like, I, well, they probably just closed it.
No, no.
Don't tell me residents...
Well, I, I'm pretty sure they have a special permit parking ordinance that does that, and I'm sure that they have a traffic study to support that. The reason I bring it up is because we've talked about this in Spring Garden a number of times, because of all the college students that park in front of people's houses.
Yeah.
And I'm fairly certain that in that instance, we had to have a traffic study done by the police department that supported one hour, two hour resident parking only. So I just wanna verify that that is the process or is not the process. Because otherwise, you can put all the signs you want up that you want, the first time someone realizes you don't have a traffic study enforcing it, they go to the M D J and they say, we can't enforce it, and you guys spent the money to put the signs up, and you spent the time for the police officer to go over there and prosecute the case, and it turns out you couldn't enforce it in the first place. I just wanna be sure that that...
No, that's fine.
That makes, that, that, if it supports it, if, if you don't have to do it, so be it. But I just wanted to be sure that, because if you do no parking on one side of the street, you absolutely have to have a traffic study. You've probably done that.
Yeah.
Did we do that up on, not Independence, what's the other one?
Washington.
Was, did we do that on Washington, have to do a traffic study? Donnie, do you know?
It had to be before I came here, before I came here in 87, so I don't know.
Yeah, High Street, that's, I mean, I don't think we, yeah, in front of Dave's house. I don't think we did a traffic study for those.
For which one?
High Street or for Washington.
You were going back to that.
Like, Donnie just said it was 30 years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, for Washington, that was 30 years ago.
About High Street, that?
I think that was all they do.
Pretty sure they did a traffic study.
I can now guarantee you that they did a traffic study on High Street, yeah.
They do have to do traffic study, I do know that. This is a little different circumstance, that's why I wanted to...
Well, there is, there is already, no parking on the other side of the street, 'cause that's where the bike trail is.
Right.
And I suspect that there was a traffic study, that's easily supported, like, you got bikes there.
Yeah, well, yeah, that had to be done.
Yeah, but that's, that's a motor vehicle code law, that's got nothing to do with it. So I just wanna verify that, if you get down to that minutia where it's resident parking only and has to be a traffic study or does not have to be a traffic study.
Is that one that we could get Brian from Shrewsbury to do?
A lot of police departments can, I don't know if your police department has, if the regional has the authority, if they have the know-how, I guess they have to take it testing and certify, and they can write traffic studies. Spring Garden does theirs.
Well, we have, we have the box that does traffic.
It's not just counting it, it's, you gotta look at all, all kinds of different stuff. It's not just, it's not just, you don't make your...
It's not how many cars come through or...
How many accidents have been, how, what's the speed limit, there's a whole list of things.
What about having this so that it just says resident, residential parking only? And then, I mean, do we need to get, do we need to issue permits? 'Cause my concern is when people come to visit.
Yeah, but how are you gonna know whether it's a resident or somebody that's over at, you know, the...
Straight, yeah, it becomes almost impossible, when you do that, it becomes, without the permit, it's very difficult to enforce, that's why generally you'll see permit, signs, stickers, placards, whatever. That, that's why I always tell people, when they come in in developments and say, so and so parks their car in front of my house, and the best we can do is say, we'll prohibit parking on that side of the road, which includes... and the best we can do is say, we'll prohibit parking on that side of the road, which includes your guests, your relatives that come to party, that includes everyone down the line. So, it, it can't be that selective that only residents can park in front of their houses, you know, and their guests. What's the next resident say when they're having a party at the same time that, you know, this guy's having a, they're both having Super Bowl parties, and like, well, they're all my guests, they're all my guests, and the next thing you know, they've parked the whole street up, so, that's.
But down where we're talking about, they still have the option to park in a municipal parking lot even if they're visiting.
Right.
And it's not that far.
And, and one of the first rules of parking regulations is people will park as close to wherever they're going as possible, whether there is available parking somewhere else that's much easier to access. They'll park as close to the freaking door as they can.
Unless they're not allowed to, or will they anyway?
Why do we take a cars in the fire lane and door, and handicap spaces that don't apply? Cause people always pay attention.
I got news for you, I wonder when the last time that happened was.
I'm just saying, it's, uh, look, you guys put all the signs up you want, but if it, if they're not in force school, what's the point of spending the money to put the sign? Just let me get the answer for you, and then maybe.
Yeah, okay, yeah, why don't you do that?
I'll make a motion to table that ordinance.
So we have a second, we're now, well, I'm too late, Dan, we don't need you to, all right, all in favor? My vote is aye.
Go ahead, Anne.
Well, I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna answer correspondence or I'm waiting for direction from the president.
Okay, well, I don't think, is there any correspondence?
Public comments?
Public comments?
Exactly. No?
Go ahead, Anne.
I'll make a motion for adjournment. And I only made one motion, my vote is aye, right? I'll make one.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you, Danny.
Uh, as soon as the surveyor gets the, all of the, they should've been out, were they all ready?
You know what that is, don't you?
Okay, they have, they have to get out and get surveys, so they have the legal description. Once it goes out, what happens is the ordinance is get it done, so it's, as soon, or the day after the meeting, I've sent the survey, I'm just, cause we gotta get all the. Needs and bounds and all that, all the directions, all the deeds, make sure it all matches, it's gonna be good. It's still moving forward, we're good.